I'd like to call to order the city council meeting on January 4th, 2024, 501 Main Street, 5:30 PM. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Oklahoma, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call?
Crenshaw.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Altman's.
Here.
Dade.
Present.
Andrews.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
All present.
Under item number four, Mayor's Correspondence, I'd like to begin by thanking Joe Schuman and all the volunteers for one of the most wonderful City of Christmases we've ever had. Oh my goodness. And what was that number again? Thirty-five, one, two, two. That is great. And I'd like to, you know, reach out to the public and everything and thank you for their support, thank you for the volunteers, and thank you for the people that go through. Thank you for the people that donate to it because all these people, including Joe and his volunteers, are what make it possible for us to have it year after year. And then, of course, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and wish everybody a great 2024. And then I think that I'd like to just say tonight, let's all move forward and let's all be positive. Keokuk's a great place to work, great place to live, great place to do shop, to send your kids to school, to do the parks. So let's make this a positive year. Let's make this the positive Keokuk year. And we all move forward. And with that, shop, eat, drink, local, do everything you can in Keokuk first, and then reach out to other communities to help support them too. Item number five is citizens' request. And what we will have now is if somebody wants to come forward and speak, they can come to the podium. They take about five minutes, state your name and your address. And if there's multiple people here for the same thing, try to keep your comments different or instead of so much repeating. And if there's anybody out there, somebody can go first.
Dorothy Cackley, 620 J Street. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm back.
I work late.
Okay. Number one on my list is to make a request that if you are indeed considering citizen participation on the selection committee for the new city administrator, I would like to add my name to that list to be considered to serve on that committee. Okay. Number two. I'm wondering which city department and/or employee will be taxed with being the snow on the sidewalk officer. Have I heard from the street survey in the past that there are approximately eight miles of streets in this city? Is that correct? Public Works is not here, so maybe we don't remember. It seems to me like I heard that when they were talking about taking the car around and doing the videoing and stuff. For one person working an eight-hour shift, going around and looking at what sidewalks are shoveled or not shoveled, then being taxed with finding someone to clean those sidewalks, then assessing a fine or a lien on a property because it wasn't done within a 24-hour period of time, pales on the edge of being totally ridiculous. And I hope that whoever you put in charge of this, you have some consideration for, whether it be street people, Public Works people, police officers, all of those departments in a snow situation, which we've been very fortunate so far, all have better things to do than look at the sidewalks to see whether they're shoveled. That should be a neighbor upon neighbor, neighborhood situation, something that Big Brother can stay out of.
Can I? Sorry, Dorothy, can I just respond to that? Is this about the ordinance that was posted on like Facebook and different places?
Yes.
Okay, so I had had people reach out to me. That ordinance has been in place for over 10 years. So it's not like this year someone is going to be employed to just do that. I do think that we should look into the ordinance itself if we're not going to enforce it to how it's written, but I don't see that anyone is going to be getting fined after 24 hours. I don't know if the police chief or Casey can...
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask maybe staff if want to share how they go about this.
But it's an old ordinance. It's not one that is new.
Casey.
So for the, I'm Casey Barnes for code enforcement. We do work through that. So every year, it's usually based on where we know there's a lot of foot traffic. So like, you know, coming up South, South 7th, we already know we have a lot of foot traffic there. I reach out to businesses and individuals there. Neighborhood complaints are welcome to be called in, and then I'll go, you know, check that out and communicate with the parcel that has the covered sidewalk. We do have a lot of people that are active in shoveling and putting down salt and sand. So basically, it's, a majority is them calling in, but definitely Main Street businesses, when they don't do it, I reach out to them immediately. And the South 7th, on the, usually on the side, like, over this, the eighth side, pretty much, I'm pretty immediate with getting communication to those people. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay. Well, I have property on that side. And my question now is, are there any ordinances or provisions that would permit me to have snow fence put up on my property to avoid having the buildup of snow?
Can't hear you.
I think as long as it doesn't interfere with any pedestrian, you know, pedestrians trying to get someplace or traffic site, I don't believe that a snow fence would be a problem.
All right. Now, my third item is regarding item number seven on the agenda. I won't be able to stay for that portion of the discussion. I understand that the variance request for the material and equipment storage area on I Street has been removed and is not pertinent to what is going to be voted on supposedly tonight. Does that mean that the Water Works will be accessing the ravine area from the Lincoln School area? Or are they giving up on that? Will there be a different public hearing if they choose to go ahead with the storage facility there on I Street?
What I understand is that they're going to continue with their storage of equipment at the Rid Street property on between 14th and 13th, 14th area. That's where they're gonna have their equip, that's where they've had their equipment and they're gonna continue to leave it there.
So all interest in I Street, Missouri Avenue intersection has been?
For storage of equipment. Mr. Bogner's here and he can speak during, the council can have him speak now if he wishes, but what I understand is they would still like to use that for fill.
Entrance into the ravine?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So will there be another public hearing prior to that?
No, there's no need for. If they vacate the streets tonight, they will be owned by Keokuk Municipal Water Works.
So they have completed the purchase of the I Street property?
I think they have a purchase pending approval.
Hello, Dave Bogner, General Manager at the Water Works. We have, first of all, the storage at the I Street, Missouri Street location is off the table. Our only intention is to use that for landfill purposes. Our intention is to access it from the I Street side where the ground's higher, go into the ravine. We have signed purchase agreements with the landowners in place. We have not completed those because we will execute those with the city council's approval. We didn't want to have an agreement and have the city council say no and have land that we can't use.
Okay.
Okay, with that information then, will the Water Works or city do anything to make J Street, Oak Street, I Street, and Missouri Avenue durable enough to withstand the dumped up dump truck traffic expected to be hauling the refuse in there?
So those are all things that we would be discussing at number seven. And so we're at citizens' request right now. So we're gonna have to wait and discuss that when we get ready for the voting on the resolution.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you, Dorothy. Anybody else for citizens' request? Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Minutes of the regular city council meeting and council workshop of December 21st, 2023. Resolution approving a liquor license for the Columbia Room of Keokuk, 11 North 6th Street, Class C retail alcohol license effective January 20th, 2024, pending dram. Resolution approving a liquor license for West K Mark 707 Palin Street, switching from a Class B to a Class E retail alcohol license effective January 5th, 2024. Resolution approving an urban revitalization tax exempt for Thomas and Carissa Crenshaw, 424 Orleans Avenue for a sun porch, and a motion to pay bills and transfers listed in registers number 5381 through 5382. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh huh. Any more discussion? Okay, motion's approved. Item number seven, old business. Consider resolution to vacate and dispose of the platted unimproved portion of H Street between Block 72 and 73, an alley in Block 72, Mason's Lower Edition, City of Keokuk, Lee County, Iowa. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Okay.
The Keokuk Municipal Water Works requested the vacation and disposal of a portion of the platted unimproved alley in Block 72 and a platted unimproved portion of H Street between Block 72 and 72, Mason's Lower Edition. The purpose of the request is to use this property for a fill site. The City Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval for the vacation at their meeting on August 28th, 2023. There was neighboring property owners in attendance that expressed concern slash opposition about a negative impact on the roads that are in poor condition. A public hearing was held on November 16th, 2023.
I really don't have anything else to add. Tonight, we're just basically looking at, we have the maps of the actual portion of street and the portion of the platted alley. This is all ravine. The neighboring property owners do have concerns regarding the road that they're not in that great of condition on Missouri Avenue. This area, this area on I Street, including, oh, I don't know what that one is. There are several areas out there that's been used for fill for years. I mean, it's, as long as I've been here, contractors have been taking their dirt, concrete, you know, it wasn't wood, it's not garbage, it's just that type of stuff, soil, sand. So, I mean, I'm not recommending one way or another. It's the, we have looked at, Dave and I have had many conversations about other locations that might be more appropriate in industrial areas. Shelley did mention possibly some areas today for the fill, but we're not really, this is kind of a secondary thing, the vacation of the streets and alleys is what's on the agenda. It's not really regarding the fill.
What's the street currently made of? Is it like concrete?
No.
No.
I know that Missouri Avenue up to a certain point is concrete. The rest of it is just, I believe, asphalt. Dorothy, it's concrete in front of your house or is it just asphalt? It's asphalt, so it would be asphalt.
But we're voting to vacate the streets as well?
Well, the street that you're looking at doing is just, it's just ravine, that there's, it's, they're not, they're not improved.
So we're vacating the alleys?
Alley street, it's unimproved portions. They're platted, but there's no street there.
When the trucks travel, what route are they gonna take to get to that location?
They'll most likely come up Missouri.
Most likely, but there's...
There's J Street, you can get in by J Street or you can get in by Missouri. I'd say the vast majority of the time will be Missouri, depending on the location where they're coming from. I'm sure there will be times that they'll come up J Street as well. It's a single axle dump truck.
And I think you said you was gonna leave the trees along Missouri Avenue as a buffer.
Yes, we'll leave the trees that are currently there to maintain that barrier, if you will, between the ravine and the street.
What kind of frequency do you foresee of the trucks using the site to dump?
We had, in the past year, we've had about 45 leaks. So each time we have a leak, we have to dig a hole and we have to go somewhere with the dirt. In addition to that, when we do maintenance on valves, curb boxes, that type of thing. So honestly, you can probably, I don't know, double that, triple that. So say every other day would be, I would say, a high estimate of the frequency. Okay?
With our street study, once we start improving on some of these streets, will there be any repercussion if they are, you know, damage from the heavy traffic?
I wish Brian was here. Actually, I sent this information to Brian. He didn't have any concerns with the request, but I'm sorry, I cannot answer your street questions.
Is this for just one per, one specific person, purpose, one dig? Or is this for, anywhere they would dig throughout the city and then go there?
I believe, I mean, if you're referring to, it's for Keokuk contractors, not Keokuk contractors, Keokuk Municipal Water Works. Sorry about that, Dave. And I'm assuming that you are not going to allow other contractors to bring their fill.
It'll be the contractors working for the Water Works. I mean, it could be a contractor other than the Water Works.
It's for one entity?
This would be for any time the Water Works is digging and needs somewhere to put the material that they've dug up. We do use a contractor to do our digging for us. So you'll see someone else's name besides the Water Works on the side of the dump truck.
That's what I wanted to...
That's your question?
Yeah, yes.
Is this something that, I'm sorry, is this something that you need immediately? Or if we were to table it, for example, until maybe Mr. Carroll was here to talk about the streets, or if there's a future plan for the streets? I just, I don't know if I feel comfortable if there are residents around the area that have so many unanswered questions if, if we don't, if Mr. Carroll's not here to answer it. So is it like an immediate need? Yeah, I noticed that the board, the City Planning Commission was all the way back in August, so it's been going on for a while.
Yeah, we've been trying, I've been trying to get my ducks in a row before I brought it to you. That's why it's taken this long and I'm new to this, so.
Sure.
It's a learning process. It's not urgent that we do it today, but honestly, we currently were putting piles of dirt on our old fill spot because we don't have anywhere to go and it's full. So we need to find a home quickly.
Sure.
So a month, we can live with a month. Much longer than that, we need to find a new home.
Okay. I just feel like we don't have answers to the street questions and I don't want to like push their concerns under the rug if we, if we aren't comfortable with that without knowing the information. But that's just my opinion, so.
Other?
Any more discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Did we have any citizens that wanted to speak to the issue?
Dorothy, did you want to come back or is there any citizens that want to come back up, come up? Are you sure? Okay. Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to table it since, since I felt comfortable doing that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, motion on the agenda to table. Item number seven, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion is tabled for next council meeting, I hope.
Maybe we can get together with Mr. Carroll and come up with like a plan now or a future plan, or look at those other locations that you were talking to Pam about and then have something for the next meeting.
Okay. Item number eight, boards and commissions. We just have one on there, Rand Park Pavilion Commission. It's the final notification. It says second, but it's supposed to be the final notification. No vote is required. It's Rena Mackey term to expire. Oh, vote is required. It says none there, but the vote is required. Her term is to expire 10/22/2029. Do I have a first?
Some moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Do I, item number nine, do we have any council liaison reports?
I have for Oakland Cemetery Initiative. We have all of the texts for the signage and they are ordered and will be made over the next couple of months. We'll store them and be able to install them in the spring when it's nicer out. We have all of the money for the materials and stuff, so we're really excited and thanks to the city for allowing us to do the project and for supporting it. The Homeless Alliance has announced a masquerade ball at Myers Courtyard on March 2nd, 2024. You can reach out to them on their Facebook page. And then I have, the Keokuk Little League is looking for board members or any kind of help you can offer, and they have a meeting Wednesday, January 10th at 6:00 at the Little League.
I am the liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission, and we have gotten our 501(c)(3), so we will be able to reach out to more areas in the state of Iowa and areas in the United States for grants. And also, we have reached out to someone to work on a CLG for us to help with not only historic preservation for our commission, but for Main Street and for different areas in the community. So we're working diligently on that. And in the spring, we hope to have enough money to start our foundation on the Bodden House here on Northird.
Anyone else? Item number 10, staff reports. Oh man, you guys are easy tonight. Okay, item number 11, new business.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I'd like to request if you could just give an update on the smell issue. I know it's been out in the local media, but I just think it'd be appropriate to also address it here tonight as well.
Okay. I will tell you what I've done. I did have a press release that I was sent to the radio and the newspaper in regards to what was going on. And Pam, our Community Development Director, and Casey have been working diligently on it, and I will let Pam go ahead and let you know what's been happening.
I sent letters out to the two industries, one on the 21st and then one, I believe it was Tuesday. I spoke with one industry. Kathy had put it in the press release regarding that they had taken on a new product. The product was not working and they were not going to run that product again other than to ship it out. I know that, and I'm sorry, Mr. Gilli is here this evening, if anybody has any questions of him. The other industry has sent a letter regarding they would like to set up a meeting with the city to discuss the allegations, I guess, and maybe appeal the decision. So that may be coming to the city council on the 18th. And I would like to say before Mr. Gilli comes up, that I actually have been working on the last couple of days, an actual odor, I guess, complaint to where citizens can maybe download it if there's issues. They can place the, just document how many days, what they, where the smell's coming from, or where they think the smell's coming from, the times, maybe which way the wind's blowing, that type of stuff. So maybe we can be more specific in on addressing the issue.
Is there gonna be any meetings before our next council meeting with Roquette?
I'm sorry?
Any meetings with Roquette before our next council meeting? Is there?
They have not set it up yet. I asked them, I'm off tomorrow, her dates were tomorrow or sometime next week, so it'll be sometime next week.
We're planning on a meeting before the, with them, with the committee.
They would like to meet with the city staff, Kathy, myself, and the administrator.
And I request you to be there too because I am the councilman in that ward. And I would like to be at that, if I could, at that meeting.
I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gilli at all?
Yes, if you could come up to the microphone.
You can come to the microphone, sir. Just let us know who you are and all that.
Hello, my name's Keith Gilli. I'm the plant manager at Glycerin Traders over off of 5th Street. What questions would you like?
I was just wondering if you could give a brief summary as to what the product is, why it's being burned, why people are having bad reactions to it, why this is all of a sudden happening over the last couple of weeks? Just anything you can tell the public as to what's going on.
The first question about burning anything, we don't burn anything. Our process is in a vacuum system, it's a complete vacuum system. What you were getting was a smell when we were finishing the product, we were putting it into a tank and we were running it through a carbon system to try to capture that smell. We were overloading the carbon system, we couldn't contain it. The product is called Rolling... The product is called rolling mill oil. In essence, all it is, is animal fats and wastewater. We were trying to strip the animal fats off of the water, and the smell you were getting was from the wastewater. Stagnant water sits long enough, it becomes very aromatic. Every time you turn it over, you get a nasty sewage smell off of it.
How would you personally describe the smell?
Rotten sewer, sour water, sewer water.
Because the smell that I was getting, and the smell that a lot of people were sharing, was more of like a burning rubber smell, kind of like a car fan belt that had been on fire.
That would not have been coming from us. The smell that you were getting, that I kept getting complaints about, which, when we first started getting complaints, I made sure I contacted the gas company where we're running it, I contacted the fire department where we're running it, and at a later date, I spoke to the mayor about it. If it was a rubber smell, it was not coming from us. And I got that a couple of times. Somebody said it was, asked us if we were running it, and we weren't even running it. So I don't know where else it may be coming from. I'm not saying that we weren't doing it, because we all knew that we were doing it. We were trying our hardest to stop doing it, so.
Well, if I could share with you my own personal experience with this, it happened a couple of weeks ago, I went up to Dollar General, and as soon as I stepped out of my car, I noticed the burning smell. I went in, and I actually thought it was coming from the Dollar General store. I asked the clerk, you know, is your HVAC fan belt catching on fire? What's going on here? She said, no, it's been like that all day, but my lungs are burning, my eyes are burning, causing some nauseousness, you know? And that feeling has been shared amongst several other people that live in this neighborhood.
And I'm, I'm right there with you, but I have, at any time during the day, I have six guys in my plant, and nobody had any nausea, nobody had any eye burning or throat burning, and we're right inside our process facility while it's being processed. Our tanks are in a building. We have ventilation in our building, but we try to contain everything in our process in our buildings.
And if I may, were you going through this process last Friday?
Yes, and I notified the fire department. We had 35,000 gallons I had to process through to get the water out of, so I could get it out of Keokuk.
Well, I would say that that is the source of this smell. People might describe it in different ways, but coming back across the bridge from Illinois, coming back into Keokuk, it hit me right away.
And I totally understand that. That's why we are no longer doing it. We were in the process of getting rid of it, but we had to get, we had to get the water off of it to be able to get it on trucks to get it out of here. So we're in the process of having trucks come in over the next couple of weeks. I'm trying to schedule them out so we can let the city know what days we're going to be loading the trucks. It takes us anywhere from about 35 minutes to 45 minutes to load a truck. There shouldn't be a whole lot of smell coming off at that point, and we're probably only going to do one to two trucks a day, and we have about seven, maybe eight truckloads of it to get out of here, and then it'll never be brought into Keokuk again.
Can you explain why the smell was detected so far away?
I can't tell you why it would be detected.
Like, I mean, that's really the perplexing thing to me, is how it spread all the way across town, and some folks even reported it.
I think it's important to note that they aren't the only entity at this time being looked into. I just think it's important to note that there's more than one entity we're looking into for the smell.
Okay.
Some of the reason the smell is so pertinent, and, I mean, I grew up on a hog and cattle farm, so I'm very familiar with bad smells. Colder weather makes the air heavier, and as of late, pretty much almost all of December and most of January so far, we've also had a pretty low ceiling. When that happens, the air and the smell can't dissipate, so, and I'm an old school farmer, so we used to actually put it in the honey wagon, we called it, and go spread it on the field. And on a really cold day, especially when the ceiling was low, that smell would last for a week, just from us running one wagon out there, because it can't go anywhere. On a hot summer day, when the air's a lot warmer and the ceiling's higher, it gets up out of the, out of the atmosphere. When it's cold like it is now, and then you get a low ceiling on top of that, that's why it's so much more compressed. And even, even any other smell, Roquette smell, rubber smell, any of that, if you notice on a cold day, they're more intense, they seem a little more compounded, and that's why, because it's the air that doesn't allow it to leave the atmosphere.
So taking that into consideration, that's longer that people are breathing it and having reactions to it, I think that's why it's been, you know, such concern for people.
We totally understand that.
So I guess, the thing for me is, it's not just a smell. It's toxic air that people at this town are breathing, and they're very concerned about it.
I understand what you're saying, but I can, I can provide an MSD or an SDS sheet on what we were processing. There's no hazards to it. What you were getting was just a smell. I can't, like, I'm not saying that anybody's wrong about having burning in their throat, or coughing, or queasiness, but what we were processing was literally just a wastewater stream and trying to get animal fats off of it.
So is that also going into the sewer as well?
No. We do not release anything to the sewer. Any of the waters that we got off of that product, we put into tanks, and we hauled to a digester out of state. So we did not release anything to the sewer. I think Tom can also attest to this. If we release to the sewer, they're going to know anyway, because we, they test our sewer releases all the time. So we do not release anything to the sewer. The only thing that goes to the sewer off our facility is the restrooms and the sinks.
Okay. Do we have any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Thank you very much. Okay, any more new business? With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed? We will take about a five-minute break and come back to the workshop. Okay, everybody. Here we go, guys. I'd like to call to order the City Council Workshop, January 4th, 2024. The first item on the workshop is to discuss boards and commissions. And guys, that is me, it's Amy Benson, and I usually do that here at City Hall. You have in front of you some ideas and some suggestions, and just so you know, this is not an easy project, and it's not an easy thing to do, and we do take in consideration who we put on what commission and who we put on what board. I think the frustration that Amy and I have comes from voting three times for somebody to be on a park board, voting three times for somebody to resign from the commission they're on, like we couldn't make them, you know, be on it, if we vote them no. So I have it lined out here, and what we are kind of asking is, is that it used to be on the consent agenda. It wasn't a separate item, and it went through the consent agenda, and it was voted on one time, and all the, all the people that are on boards fill out a resume, and we look at the resume, and they, you have a copy of the resume with your stuff, and they pick which board they want to be on. I might call somebody and say, would you like to be on Historic Preservation? They may say yes, they'll send this back, and they'll put Historic Preservation first, and then they may put, I'd like to be on the park board, or the pavilion, or something second, and then third. And we always look at that, and we keep those resumes in a folder within whatever group they're in, whatever commission they decided to be on. I just, we just think that it's not the, it's not a hard, it's a hard process, but we don't want people to be discouraged not to volunteer. I will tell you right now, we have 24 commissions and boards, and on those 24 commissions and boards, we have 151 members that we need to fill those boards with. It's 151 spaces, and at the present time, we only have 15 openings, which is pretty good for 151. And the reason we have eight of those openings, no, nine of those openings, is because we have a couple of commissions that have kind of gone by the wayside a little, and we need to work really hard on it. So it's just our feelings, doing the hard work that it takes to get it done, that if, we'd like to have your input. I know that you have a hard time voting on something, but I also don't think that if somebody volunteers for a commission, and somebody on the council really doesn't want them to be on it, I don't think that's something that we should do right here. But anyway, you guys are the council, and you guys get to make the decisions, and that is why this is before the workshop, and if you have any questions, throw them at me.
I like the idea of it being on the consent agenda. I don't know that we need to vote on people three or four times. It's so hard to find volunteers. In most of the groups that I'm a part of, we're constantly begging people to show up, asking for new people, and the only thing that I hope that you and Amy are able to do is maybe post the opening, so maybe people come to you instead of you having to reach out. I know that it's hard work to do that, so if people saw that there were more openings, I don't know where you post them, Facebook.
But we do have...
All skills are welcome, but I don't think that we are the place to decide who's a good fit for what board, unless we're all going to be on every board, and I'm not going to do that.
Well, I think that we're, and it's, I have it down here, that we are going to start putting it on the city of Keokuk's Facebook page and on the website when we're looking for, who we're looking, what commission needs a person, and then maybe every once in a while, like maybe every three months, maybe we will run an ad in the, maybe in the newspaper, maybe set something up on the radio station. The other thing we could do, and we did this one time a long, long time ago, we put out the resume in the waterworks, in the water bill, and we did get quite a few people that did want to sign up at that time. So Amy and I are more than willing to reach out to the community like we do. I guarantee you that when somebody says they want to be on one of these commissions, we look at it, and if I think of someone that I think would be a good fit, you know, we, we look into that too. Also, you know, I might see somebody that I think's a great fit, and they might be on there a week and say, the first meeting, and say, this just isn't for me. Most people don't stay on if they don't want to be on it, so, and most people don't say yes if they don't want to do it, so, anyway. But we will work on the publicity, and again, it's up to you guys.
I was going to say, I think that, so we have a set application, it sounds like, that instead of a resume, an application, actually? We have an application, and then...
No, we just have the rep, this resume.
Well, it's an application. A resume is an individual's resume that has their, okay, anyway. So then, one thing I would say is, it'd be nice, is council people, you can send that out for the council to review, and it doesn't have to be in a board packet, it's public, it's a public record. But what I'm saying is, then, at least the council, if the council wants to know their qualifications and what they're doing, they have access to that information. So then they know, oh, okay, this is Jack Smith, and Jack Smith does this, and this is why they think they would be interested in serving on that commission, just so that they know, because we asked the city, we asked them to turn it in, but then they just know. So it says here, are you presently serving on any other city board or commission? What attributes do you feel you have to offer? It just might give the council a little bit more information to feel more confident in knowing who those individuals are.
Anybody else?
I guess I don't mind if they're here at the city and someone wants to come and look at them. I don't know how we can say someone is qualified for a board if somebody dropped their resume off here and said, all they can do is weed eat, and you guys are like, well, you know, Little League, you need to be good at baseball, when really, we need someone who can weed eat. So like, unless we are intimately aware of what these boards and commissions need, I don't know how we can decide if the person is qualified or not.
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying is, is that like, what if somebody says, why do you want to be involved? I don't like the parks board, so I want to be on the parks commission.
I think it's up to the parks board, once they're on that board, to say, look, this isn't working.
If somebody would put that on there, they wouldn't be, if somebody said, I don't like the Parks Board, we probably wouldn't recommend him to be on the Parks Board.
But how do you know that if you're a councilperson and you're just, oh, you as a mayor would not recommend it?
Amy and I would not recommend them. And every time somebody requests to be on something, for example, we had somebody wanted to be on civil service when we were looking for someone a couple of weeks ago, right there before Christmas, and I called Zeth and said, here's a person that would like to be on here. Do you have any ideas? Do you know this person? Do they sound good for you? And Zeth said, yeah, it'd be a good fit. We go. But if I was to say to somebody, it depends on the board, too. I mean, you know, if somebody wants to be on the Pavilion and they're really into music, yeah. We want them to come because these people need help. But we still reach out to the Pavilion and say, this person is applying for this, and you have an opening. I hope you don't have a problem with us put them on. We don't ever put anybody on that we don't talk to that group first.
Okay, well, I didn't know that. Thank you for clarifying.
In my opinion, if you have a person on the consent agenda that you're recommending, can't we just include a copy of this in with the packet?
I wouldn't.
Okay.
Well, maybe to council members if you want it, but not to a public agenda that goes out.
So, here's what I'm thinking, because we voted on having somebody on a board, and I had somebody ask me like, oh, you voted for so-and-so to join that. Tell me about them. And I couldn't. I didn't know who they were.
So are you going to be able to know about 151 people, though?
No, but I'm just saying like it's more information for us when someone asks who that.
Yeah, I think it's, it just can't be in a public agenda. We're going to get less volunteers if they have to put this application of what their skills are to the general public.
I would agree with that. If we're going to add anything to the packet, maybe it'd be just their name and what their reasons maybe for wanting to be on it, and maybe what they, hey, you know, I used to be plant manager at such-and-such, and I think I'd be good for the Park Board. I'm a big security fan, and I'm not okay with giving out everybody else's home address and email and phone numbers out for public knowledge, and necessarily even to City Council as a rule. But knowing a little bit about somebody, that's one thing. But knowing all the personals, if you and Amy and whoever else have already gone through that process, realistically, for one, we ought to be able to at least, hey, yeah, we agree with that. I agree with what Carissa says, but I'd like to know a little bit about that person. But I don't need to know where they live. I don't need to know all of that, right? I don't need to know all of that. I'm just, I'm more on the line as, hey, you know, we've got John and Bill and Sam, and John likes this, and he wants to be part of this because of this. And then we would maybe have, so when somebody comes up to us and says, hey, Chris, I saw you voted for this guy. Why? Well, when I saw his packet, it said he had some of these background, and this is why he wanted to help, and he wanted to be a part of Keokuk's, making Keokuk better. And she's not caught off guard, was like, well, I don't know. I don't know anything about him. And that does, that helps us. Okay, yeah, we were able to look at some of his qualifications, and we liked that.
So I do want to clarify that we are required to follow Iowa Code 22.1 for open records laws. So if somebody requests these records, we have to give them to them. We do not have to put it out there in the public. But I'm just saying is that so people understand that in the aspect of like.
We can follow FOIA. I'm just saying, we don't need to have it put out there every single time.
I agree with that, too.
Council can absolutely get these applications if that's what they want. I just don't think it should be a part of the agenda.
I agree 100%.
Well, very seldom do we ever have the luxury of having too many responders. You know, I've started out in this thing being on the Park and Recreation Board, and boy, I tell you what, you get an education because Park and Recreation Board is an advisory board. We don't make no decisions. You just advise the City Council what you can do. And then at that time, you could enter into a contract over the ballpark and Tumbly Park, and it didn't take the City Council very long to take that out of there. So all you really got to be is an interested citizen. You don't have to be a PhD to be on these things and give your time and give your honest opinion. And that's what we, what I want anyway from the citizenship is people to give me their honest opinion about what's going on. I don't think they have to be a PhD.
So I'm going to make this suggestion. Please read what we've talked, what we presented to you, and then remember that we will take care. I think one of the things where we slacked is we haven't gotten notes from a lot of different ones, but we will be suggesting they take minutes. They have a chairman and all that. And I would suggest that the council give us their ideas. Read what we've written down here. If you have something that needs to go to it, get an email to me before the next meeting. And at the next meeting, we will put it on the agenda to move it to the consent agenda. If it doesn't go through, then we'll move from there. How's that sound? So if you have any ideas or if you have special requests, email Amy and I, and we will take them and get them all put down and take them into consideration. How's that?
I don't have any problem with the way it's presented here. I think in all the years I've been paying attention to council meetings, I can think of one time that an appointee or a nominee was even questioned. So moving it to the consent agenda and simplifying things, but still retaining the checks and balance where the council does still get a say if that need ever arises, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so make sure you let me know how you feel and what you need to be put in with what we've already suggested. And with that being said, let's move on to number two, hotel motel tax.
One of the things I do want to clarify is legally, we are required to keep minutes of all city boards and commission meetings and turn those meetings in and keep them in for impertuity.
Yes, we are.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Also, that is including council committee meetings.
Yes, that is true. Okay, we're moving on to item number two, hotel motel. We got a list here somewhere. Mine got buried. Who's first? Keokuk Fine Arts Council.
Hi, Happy 11th Day of Christmas and Happy New Year. I'm Chuck Peicher with Fine Arts Council. And thank you for your support in the past from the Hotel Motel Tax Funds and request another allotment for this next fiscal year. We're asking for $15,000. We're doing all our usual allotments to various organizations, and we hope to expand that a little bit, as well as cover some items with increased costs for those organizations. But I want to invite you to the High School Arts Show that'll be coming up, our annual show in March, and a variety of other smaller venues that we help support through the money that's given to us by Hotel Motel Taxes. If you have any questions, otherwise I'll get out of your hair.
If you could quickly, Chuck, just go over the difference between previous years of $12,500 and this year's of $1,500. I see the two itemized changes is request by individuals and then the unidentified unknown. If you could just walk us through the thought process of the Fine Arts Council with the increased requests in those two items.
Sure. Well, part of that is we're hoping in the next year to, we will be spending more than we're taking in, but we're spending down some of the money that frankly didn't get spent during COVID. But also, again, with inflation and things, you know, we have, costs for these different things are going up, and so we hope to be able to increase the money we can give to those organizations.
The request by individuals line, that's the way I interpret it. That's kind of, that'll change from year to year. So that's, you're leaving that available if some organization were to come to the council to request money to host an event.
Yeah, that's correct.
But they're not one of your regular annual ones then already.
Right.
So do organizations, do they know that the Fine Arts Council has this availability?
We've been trying to put out the word better than we maybe have in the past, or we certainly since the COVID shutdown have been getting more requests from other organizations than we've used in the past.
Good to hear, yeah.
I think so.
So under the budget operational costs, the category, the very bottom, there's only one item listed $140 for insurance, but your total's 200. So where's the other 60?
Well, I guess the box rental is there, the insurance, piano tuning. I'm not exactly sure. I think that's maybe just rounding up a little bit. Our regular expenses are really very small.
Any more discussion? Okay, thank you, Chuck. Okay, moving on, Lake Cooper Foundation.
Hi, I'm Doug Mantlick from the Lake Cooper Foundation. I've been in this building a few times, the first time, I think, since it's been for one of these meetings, but I've been in the building a lot, and this is a beautiful building, so proud of it. Thank you. I'm here for the Big Damn Street Festival for next year. I gave you guys a letter, but I'd kind of explain a little bit of it. We're real excited with this group that we picked up last year. Two years ago, we had a group out of Des Moines that was pretty embarrassing for us. It was embarrassing for the industry. They only had like five rides. They were supposed to have 10. It was just kind of a joke. So we didn't think we were going to have one last year. And then miraculously, through some Facebook and some communication, we found a group outside of McComb, and they're called Boden Amusements. The nice thing about them is they were so well and easy to work with. The group we had several years ago put on a pretty good show for us, but they were very difficult to work with. Everything was an argument. Everything was a battle. We put up with them because we had to. This group, in all honesty, is the best we'll probably ever get in the near future for Keokuk. They're a great outfit. They bring 15 solid rides. They bring two concession trailers. They bring five games. So it's a complete, complete deal. Of course, it's up to us to put the rest of it together, whether it's music or whatever else we decide to do. But when you have a great carnival like this for our area, for example, they had Burlington last year, and Burlington trying to bring theirs back a little bit, and a lot bigger city, and I think they had 18 rides. And we did 15 because we did a little bit of negotiation with them because until we get our track record proved, they want to have a minimum. And that's the way the bigger guys are. They're not going to come to Keokuk or anywhere unless they know they're going to at least break even. Last year, their break-even point on carnival rides only, this isn't concessions or anything, their break-even point was 40,000, so we had to guarantee them in sales. We ended, the weather was terrible. The weather turned on us. It was 90 degrees the week before. It went down to 40 degrees that night. Down at the river, pretty cold. So our Friday night was really bad. The rest of it turned out pretty good. The Saturday carnival turned out great. But we ended up being short about $4,300 that we had to pay them. But we did get them for $35,000 last year. That was part of our negotiation back. As we said, their break-even point was 40, but we did get them for 35. This year, they're not throwing any punches. They're a great group. We know what they offer. So this year, our guarantee is 40,000. So it's a little scary, but at the end of the day, if you don't provide a quality festival, you're not going to get the corporate to support you. That hurt us a little bit last year, but some of our major supporters kind of backed off on us a little bit, I think because of the disappointment from the year before. These people are great. Like I said before, they want to come to Keokuk. They like Keokuk. They like to come in town early because their guys can fish, and they don't want to work. So they'll come to town on Sunday night and not start setting up till Tuesday or Wednesday and finish up, and they'll fish the whole time. So they want to be here. Their employees want to be here. I can't say enough of good things about them, but what I like to say is I appreciate your guys' support over the years. Financially, last year, we made $700, and I don't know how we did it. I think how we did it was we worked it hard. We worked it hard with your help. We worked it hard with a lot of the smaller businesses in the community, between real estate and banks and everybody that we could get a hold of. But it was a dismal year. You know, it was disappointing as far as the music goes and all that, because once the sun went down, it was just too cold. Next year, we're going to move it up a week. We're going to move it up to the end of September, which last year was 90 degrees. Well, 90 is better than 40, I'm telling you right now, because we've been through 90s in August. This was the only week that they had available to be able to support the 15 rides. We could have got them another weekend, but they'd only run five or six rides. And so the good news is, we've got them as long as we want them. Because we're going to do the guarantee. So next year, we got to move it up. We got to guarantee them 40. I think moving it up a weekend is going to help that. I think the stability of what the industry scene, that we're doing a better job, that we had a lot of good comments. We had people say, oh, my gosh, this is great. You've got more rides. It's a full deal. So we're excited about that. We would just like to have your guys' support. We do have a small budget that we keep, with Lake Cooper Foundation, we keep these monies totally separate. These monies don't go anywhere else. We do a couple fundraisers that supports the building. This does not. This money stays for the street fair. We have a small cushion because one year, it happens, we're going to have a bad year. And when we have, whether it pours down rain all weekend, we still have our commitments. Our bands still want paid. Our carnival still wants paid, so we still have bills. If we're not having an attendance, we don't sell anything. And so it's kind of a, so we do have a small nest egg for if we have a bad year. But that way, we can continue to move on, so we just don't go away. I mean, if we didn't have, you know, this year, like I said, I couldn't believe we made, I think it ended up being like 500. We found another bill that came in later. But I was, I thought we were going to be down 5,000. I really did. And somehow, we made it through that. So I feel very optimistic about next year, but I sure appreciate your support. And any questions that you may have, I'd love to answer them.
I thought it was great, and I thought 40 degrees at nine months pregnant was perfect.
We just got to get everybody pregnant. I don't know.
Pregnant people aren't supposed to ride the rides.
I wasn't. I was just walking around.
Any more questions, guys?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Keokuk Arts Center. Do I have anybody here for the Arts Center? Okay, Main Street, Keokuk Incorporated.
I have a quick question for, is Arts Center and Fine Arts, do they do anything together?
Chuck, would you be able to answer that? Okay, okay.
Hello. My name is Amy Hob, and I am the Vice President of Main Street Keokuk, Inc., and owner of the Blue Umbrella Bakery at 412 Main Street. For the upcoming fiscal year, Main Street Keokuk is requesting a $40,000 allocation from Hotel Motel Funds to better align with new accreditation standards prescribed by Main Street America. Our organization aims to double the size of our budget in 2024. This will be achieved not through an increase in financial support from the city, as our request remains unchanged from last year, but by implementing several new fundraising initiatives that will allow us the opportunity to hire additional staff, invest more dollars into community engagement and downtown beautification projects, and participate in a rebranding process that will better distinguish Main Street Keokuk as an organization and downtown Keokuk as a destination. We are looking forward to the work ahead of us this year and to achieving goals that benefit not only downtown Keokuk, but the City of Keokuk and its residents alike. Any questions?
I would just like to say that a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to, in my car, drive on Main Street just when the sun was going up, and so there really wasn't traffic. And I can't remember the last time I drove Main Street without traffic. And so I just kind of daydreamed while I was driving. But I noticed these pockets of just storefronts that are vibrant and successful. And I know we still have areas and there's still blocks that have plans for work and need some work in the future. But it was just really nice to see those areas where some of these activities have made the difference. have made the difference and, and just had some, some great looking storefronts with the sun just glaring off of them. And, and I don't know if three or four years ago, if I made that same drive, I would have had that same impression, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions? Any questions, anybody? I will echo his sentiments. I think you guys are doing a great job. Where would we be without somebody that wants to make sure our Main Street's great? So really good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, Kiakuk Park Pavilion Commission.
Good evening. My name's Ted Elting. I'm the Chairman of the Rand Park Pavilion Commission. We respectfully request the city council budget monies for the Rand Park Pavilion's maintenance and care. Pavilion's an attractive asset, and it takes money to upkeep the grounds and the pavilion-sponsored concerts. Last year, seven concerts, roughly $700 per concert. All the information's there. We're requesting the $7,500 to help maintain the pavilion. We also had close to 300 volunteer hours, no, 250 volunteer hours this year. And we don't have everybody in, and I would love it if it took just one vote to get people on our commission and any other board they would like to be on. Any questions?
What specifically at the pavilion do you, do you want to revitalize or maintain?
Oh, well, we're at 11 years on the roof. The turf takes specific care, irrigation that we use throughout the summer. That's what keeps it green and keeps it from burning up. We used it a little bit too much last year. It was a little soggy on one concert. The lighting fixtures, we've painted. We pay for the landscaping and maintenance. I know that the soffit is going to need restained, but it's difficult finding somebody with a lift that can get up that high. That's something we're looking at this year. I know last year, we also, through a grant, got a, another picnic table with the chess and checkerboard embossed in the top. That's ready to be put in, but we'll wait till warmer weather.
Very good. Has there been any discussion about getting closer access ramp for the performers to get to the stage easier?
Actually, that's in the letter, too. Yeah, we were hoping to, when they were redoing the Permian Bowl Paver project, that was on the list. But yeah, we need to work on an access road at the back to make it easier to move equipment in and out.
Yeah, it's just like the one thing that's kind of missing from the whole setup. But I did notice that the soffit is definitely needs retreated and everything. The sooner the better, so it doesn't.
And, and the roof's at 11 years old, so. But it was just inspected last year, so it's still okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Ted. Last but certainly not least, KEDC.
So good evening, City Council, Mayor Mahoney, new city administrator, Mr. Hinton, welcome, and department heads. I'm Carrie Klepper, President of Kiakuk Economic Development. I became President of KEDC, and you've heard this story, in July of 2021. By the end of that year, our hospital closed, ADM left. It wasn't a good start to my term. Happily, a new medical group is applying to the state of Iowa to designate our hospital a rural emergency hospital, and that hospital should be open this year. We always have people looking at the ADM property, and that is being utilized, but not maybe the way we'd like for it to be. But anyway, that's, that's in the process. We work very closely with Lee County Economic Development, and we support them financially. We budgeted $30,000 for Lee County Economic Development. We also work really closely with the Southeast Iowa Economic Development Port Authority. And together, our three organizations try and attract and, and, and really maintain, retain business and industry. Lee County Economic Development just last month went to France and visited Roquette. They visited Siemens, I think, also, just to firm up those relationships. It's, it's extremely difficult to attract. It's a lot easier to retain what we have, and so that's what we're really trying to do. We also, KEDC focuses on housing in Kiakuk. That's one of our, our items that we've identified as that we, we need to support and, and one of our initiatives. And we support the Kiakuk Housing Initiative in this, in this way. Of course, you all know KNI takes care of blighted properties, removing them, putting new ones up, so residents have a place to live. A year or so ago, two years ago almost, KEDC was tasked with marketing and managing the old Roquette offices and now called the Southeast Iowa Development Center. We have hired a marketing firm to advertise the center, and they get paid if we rent a space that they have referred. The building has really started to take off. Of course, we do have our star tenant, Freeze Dried USA, who started in, I think, 400 square feet, and we are renovating a new 2,000 square foot area for them, where all they're going to have is these large commercial freeze dryers. So I think, I don't remember what, how that increases their capacity, but it's going to be big. We also, with the help of, of the city, we are renovating a 6,000, or about a 4,000 square foot area for Roquette of America to move into. It's on the lower, the lowest level on the two-story side, which would be the 14th Street side. And we've secured with the help of the city, a line of credit up to $350,000. So far, we, KEDC has spent about $190,000 of our money. We have not turned that over to the line of credit. We don't feel there's a reason to pay, to pay interest on something that we don't need right now. So we will repay ourselves at some point. We did take a $60,000 draw, I believe, last week, but that space should be ready for Roquette to move in in the next week. I'm really excited when, when Mr. Carroll gets back. I've asked him to give me a tour of that because I'm excited to see it. I've seen the art, you know, the architects' renderings, and I'm, I'm really curious to see. I've seen the gutted space, and it's, the difference between what it was and what it is even now is just unbelievable. So we're really excited about that. I would encourage any of you, if you haven't taken a tour through the Southeast Iowa Development Center, call me, call Brian, and we'd love to give you a walkthrough. I mean, it's, it's exciting for me, and because of your support with helping us secure this line of credit, last year, I believe, our income from 1428 exchange was about $20,000. This year, if we do not add any additional tenants, we are going to be at $171,000, which I think's not a bad year's work. Of course, it is taking money to do that, but when you're an entrepreneur, sometimes you realize, hey, sometimes you've got to spend money to make a little bit of money. And I don't have a long-term commitment from Roquette, but there's talk that if they get in there, it's going to be very difficult for them to leave in their lease time, and they do have additional time that they can tack on. So with that being said, I'm here again to ask for $60,000 again, same as it's been for, I don't know, a long time, as long as I've been on the KEDC board. So if you have any questions?
One thing I do want to clarify to the council is that this money is taken out of TIF money, not Hotel Motel Tax.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
The figures that you gave earlier are those based on Freeze Dried USA's new lease into the floor above them.
Yes.
For an additional 35, I believe it was.
Correct.
And my question is, I understand they just laid off all but five employees, actually three employees. Are they still planning on doing that? Are they still planning on going into the next floor even though they're?
It's the same floor. It's just another section of the building. It's on, it's on the two-story side instead of the four-story. But yeah, I mean, we're, we've got estimates, and we've put the electrical, the electrical was a big part of it, because I believe there's 12 or 15 new machines, and they're big machines, so they all have to be on one circuit. But far as I know, I, I mean, I, Tim has not said that he's not going to do that expansion. In fact, we've, he's got machines in there working now.
From my understanding, this is a temporary situation.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, looks like that's the end of it, so.
Kathy, just, just a heads up, the Historical Society did reach out. They're sending a letter, so just for everyone's mindset, they're going to be asking for $7,000, but they will be coming.
That's Historical Society, you said? Lee County Historic?
Yeah.
Okay. Lee County Historical Society. Okay, anybody else? Let's go home. Meeting's adjourned.